And if you keep in your thoughts and prayers, the father of Officer John Curtin, the police department, Donald Curtin, who passed away last week. This meeting is being recorded and televised by W H C A. And our first order of business, there are a couple of swearing in ceremonies. We're going to swear then two people to the fire department and two people to the police department. After that is over, the selectmen themselves will move upstairs to do their regular meeting, so that you don't have to. You can hang out. You can hang out here and have fun. So I'd like to introduce Chief Lance.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to thank the chair, the board, and the town administrator this evening, giving us the talk to him to swear on two members of our department. The two members were hired off by several services, but they all came from the service of paramedics. These two firefighters have successfully completed the Massachusetts Fire Fighting Academy, as well as completed their probation one year in the time of our department. The first member I'd like to introduce is Justin Evanson. Justin Evanson started August 8, 2021. Justin is a lifelong resident of the town of Abington, currently lifelong resident, currently living in Abington. Justin's proved himself to be a great addition to our department. One thing you can say about Justin is he's committed to training and bettering himself. You always see him out there working on skills or reviewing stuff. On side note, Justin was the first person I officially hired as chief, so we bestowed that honor as well. The second member, Joseph Glasgow. Joseph started with Whitman Fire on November 14, 2022. Joe is a lifelong resident of Marshfield, but also currently resides in Abington. I believe their name is Exor, so they live next door to each other. Joe has proved himself to be a great asset to our department, much like Justin. We see Joe always training, reviewing equipment, looking to better himself. Most recently approached me about becoming a member of the regional tech rescue team. Joseph also holds an degree in fire science, associate senior in fire science. Both firefighters came to our department as an unknown, which was kind of different for our department. Usually, we approve it when hired. And I can say they have proven themselves to be great additions to our department, and a service to our town, and a benefit to our community. So it's a great pleasure. I officially introduce firefighter paramedic Justin Evanson and firefighter paramedic Joseph Glasgow.
Come on, please. Come on, please. There you go. Just want to step on it? They want to get you on the bike, so.
That's fine.
No, because Frankie, you need to raise your right hand. Swear to a twenty feet, no, sorry. I state your name. No, I state your name. Both please.
I, Justin Evanson.
Promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Hold the Constitution of the United States.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
And the bylaws of the town of Whitman.
And the bylaws of the town of Whitman.
I promise to bring to my profession.
I promise to bring to my profession.
A standard of quality and integrity.
A standard of quality and integrity.
So that the conduct of my affairs to my office.
So that the conduct of my affairs to my office.
Shall be above reproach.
Shall be above reproach.
And merit public confidence.
And merit public confidence.
In the position of firefighter paramedic.
In the position of firefighter paramedic.
On the Whitman Fire Department.
On the Whitman Fire Department.
I promise to uphold such laws and bylaws.
I promise to uphold such laws and bylaws.
To which the office of firefighter paramedic.
To which the office of firefighter paramedic.
May be subject.
May be subject.
I state your name.
I, Justin Evanson.
Do so, I swear or affirm.
Do so, I swear or affirm.
That I'll perform the duties incumbent upon me.
That I'll perform the duties incumbent upon me.
As firefighter paramedic.
As firefighter paramedic.
For the town of Whitman.
For the town of Whitman.
In good faith.
In good faith.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Officer Kenevy is going to be pinned by his wife, and Officer Andrew is going to be pinned by her brother. Okay, at this time, the board is going to recess upstairs and make the meeting. Okay, we'll resume our meeting. I'd like a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept correspondence in the read file?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public forum? I don't see anybody here. We will begin with a, oh, you wanted to do something about the minutes. Are they not ready for the?
Yes, Lori is going to do the last meeting and correct those for the next one.
Okay, for the next one, okay, fine. Presentation from John O'Rourke of Good Energy with respect to community energy aggregation. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Madam Town Administrator, for letting me come before you tonight to give you a little information about community electricity aggregation. We have a presentation that I think will be shown on the screen. But I do have hard copies for you there, just in case. So we can start. I don't want to take up too much of your time. Oh, okay, fine. All right, which one do we do here? Again, thank you for letting me be here tonight. I'll just go through the short presentation. Feel free to ask questions anytime. Okay, I think we got the technical problem solved. This is our Massachusetts customer-facing team. Behind this team, we have 40 professionals, analytical research and customer service staff. Being a national company, we have plenty of backup to the team here in Massachusetts. We've taken 20 years of experience on the national level, combined it with local experience. Came into this market in January 2014, now have 68 Massachusetts clients. Our team operates the largest aggregation in Massachusetts with 25 municipalities. That recently became the largest aggregation of its kind in the country. Good Energy is active in all states that have a municipal aggregation, so we have plenty of experience at this. This will give you an idea of where our plans stand here in Massachusetts. We have 52 active plans. We have three plans that were just approved by the Department of Public Utilities. We have four more plans pending approval, and we hope they're approved within the next couple of weeks. We have plans in development. Those are plans that have not yet been submitted to the D P U. They're in the final stages to go to D P U. And then we have two new committed clients that we're starting to develop plans on. This will give you an idea of our clients around the town of Whitman. You can see we have quite a few within the southeast region here in Massachusetts. Aggregation only impacts the electricity supply side of the bill. The relationship with National Grid does not change. The only thing that changes is the name of the supplier on the bill and the rate charged. All other things, all other relationships that residents have with National Grid now stay in place. Also, any low-income or discount-type services also stay in place. That may be important for some of your senior citizens. Again, all your electrical infrastructure administration billing is all taken care by National Grid. Any outages or problems with service are taken care of by National Grid. The goals of community electricity aggregation, to give residents more competitive choices, longer-term stable electricity rates. Normally, our contracts range in the two- to three-year range. And as you know, the local utility, National Grid, changes its rates every six months. We found that that becomes a bonus for those people who want to maintain a steady rate over a longer period of time, especially for senior citizens. They very much like that. We always try to get potentially lower electricity rates, although savings cannot be guaranteed. Certainly, that's a disclaimer we put in there because the D P U wants it in there. But certainly, our track record has been very good relative to the utility rates. Many towns use municipal aggregation to put more renewable electricity into the standard or default product and the optional products that are generated by New England Renewable Energy Facilities. That helps some towns that have a climate action plan or a green plan to help them with their goals toward that plan. This also increases consumer protection against unscrupulous retail marketers of electricity. When an aggregation is in place, usually those calls calm down and they become less a bother to residents. Presently, there are 175 municipalities out of the 304 eligible municipalities in the Commonwealth, with 67% of the Massachusetts population that have, that live in towns that have approved electricity aggregation plans, including Boston and Worcester. There are 47 communities in Massachusetts that are municipal light plants. They are outside the margin of being eligible for community electricity aggregation. Good Energy has extensive experience in excellent public outreach and customer service to ethnically, racially, and economically diverse populations. We count Somerville, Waltham, Quincy, Fitchburg, Fall River, New Bedford among our most diverse communities. This is that large aggregation and how we performed since January of 2016. The orange line, the aggregation rates. The blue line is the National Grid rates. And you can see that we've done very well by residents over that time period, and certainly expect to do that in the future, although rates cannot be guaranteed, savings cannot be guaranteed. This is an example of how our renewals in the green shaped up against our competitors in Massachusetts for plans that were put in place earlier in 2023. We take the aggregation plan from start through finish and monitor once it's, once it's been launched. Essentially, we take care of all the steps. The only requirement from the town is certain decision points along the way, but essentially we do all the heavy lifting, all the paperwork, all of the approvals through the Department of Energy Resources and the Department of Public Utilities. And once the plan is in place, we monitor it, we manage it, and we give you a portal where you can come and see how the plan is doing in real time. And that's my contact information. Any questions on any of the slides? We can always go back.
Yes, Sean.
We have a couple. Thank you. I appreciate you coming in and giving the presentations. It's definitely relevant for us. I am curious about the operational adder, like the consultant that some towns opt to, they pay a bit more on the, what's it, on the electrical bill to pay for, like, is a consultant that actively works the plan or whatnot?
The adder, the adder is one mil per kilowatt hour. Okay, that's, that's our fee. It's paid by the competitive supplier. It's not paid by the town. To put that into perspective, remember the old 100 light watt light bulbs? If you ran 100, one of those light bulbs for 10 hours, that's one kilowatt hour. Okay, our fee on that is one tenth of a penny, one mil.
So you guys would be the, you would be the adder? The fee that we would collect would go directly to you?
You don't collect it, it's paid directly to us by the competitive supplier.
Sure.
Yes.
Can you amend, say it's an 18-month or 24-month term? Can you amend that during the term for a better cost?
You don't amend it during the term. What you can do at times, you can blend and extend if something comes up toward the end of that, of that period.
I guess what I'm curious about is if you lock in at the beginning for 18 or 24 months or whatnot, what's the point of the adder? Like, what, what does the consultant do? Like, if it's an option to add it or not, is kind of like what I read, then why would we add it? What would the consultant do as far as, like, helping with costs or whatnot?
Well, essentially, when we launch the program, the town picks out the plan that it feels is most advantageous to the residents. That could be anywhere from 12 months, 18 months, 24 months, 30 months, 36 months. It's a contract, okay? And during that time, it stays in place. It's not changed, okay? There are some options we have to blend and extend if we go further than that contract. But what we have to do, we have to do a competitive bid at the end of all those contracts.
So really, it would be to prepare for that competitive bid at the end? That's what the consultant would be doing primarily?
We would. For instance, if we had, if we had a two-year contract, we would start looking to extend that contract at least six months before the end of the contract, provided the market is good. And we'd only go out to bid in a good market.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. If we take your plan now, that means the entire town of Whitman has a choice of what plans they want?
This is, this is a, this is an opt-out plan. So essentially, once the plan is launched, there's a 30-day period where the residents get a customer information letter. It explains the program. And of course, before that, there's more information that comes out. And during that, that customer notification period, they can, they can do nothing and become part of the plan, or they can opt out of the plan, okay? Essentially, that affects only those people who are on the basic service of National Grid. Anybody who has already chosen a competitive supplier doesn't affect them. They're not notified at all.
Okay, because I am one of those. Because I go online and I get by the cheapest electrical supply and.
Okay, then you wouldn't get a customer notification letter because you're not on the basic service of National Grid?
So basically, if, because I usually go online when my, I think it's 18 months, when it's up, when it's getting close, I'll go online and see what I can come up with electricity to get a new supplier.
Right.
Like, right now, I have Retail Solutions, N R G Retail Solutions. I'm paying 0.169. You have higher and you have lower.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
When my plan ends, I have the choice of re-upping and staying with them. If their rates are basically what I want, if they go up, then I look for cheaper rates.
Right. Or at the end of your contract, you could come into the aggregation if you want.
Right. And what I'm wondering is, once we come in, if the town comes into it, how many, do you just look for the cheapest rate and then everybody can get on it?
What we do is we give the town on what's known as bid day, a matrix. Three or four suppliers bid on your load.
Right.
For your residents. We've got, we go 12 months, 18 months, 24 months, 30 months, 36 months. So you have a grid of these rates. You pick the one that you think is most advantageous to the residents. Those that want to stay in the program don't have to do anything. Those who have already chosen a competitive supplier like yourself are not affected because they don't get a customer notification letter. Normally, there's 10 to 12% of the population of each town who is in that position that you're in, that have picked their own supplier. But most people are still on basic service of the utility.
National Grid is very expensive. The supply, National Grid is very expensive in their supply.
Well, right now, they're 18, 2, 1, 3 per kilowatt hour.
Right. So personally, I think it's, I can understand the plan as far as 18 months, 24 months, whatever. But I think what everybody is looking for is lower electric bills. It's that simple.
Yes.
I mean, and if they can come up with a plan that lowers their plan by 20, 30, 40, 50, 60 bucks a month, right, they're going to go with it. And the trouble is, what happens if we go into the plan with yawn, right? And then are we locked in for the 18 months if that's what we choose? And all of a sudden, they go online and they see something that's cheaper than what you're offering?
And anybody who comes into the program, into the aggregation, can get out of it at any time without penalty or termination fee, and go to a third-party supplier or go back to the utility.
Yeah, I don't think that, yeah, okay.
Either way, either way. You know, certainly, certainly last year, when National Grid was 33 cents.
Yeah.
Most of our aggregations were in the 10 to 11 cent range. So it was a, it was a home run during that period of time.
That's when I went to another, I've never used, I think I've used National Grid very, not that much. I've always gone to a different supplier.
Well, you know, initially, when deregulation went into effect in the late 1990s.
in Massachusetts for plans that were put in place earlier in 2023. We take the aggregation plan from start through finish and monitor once it's, once it's been launched. Essentially, we take care of all the steps. The only requirement from the town is certain decision points along the way, but essentially we do all the heavy lifting, all the paperwork, all of the approvals through the Department of Energy Resources and the Department of Public Utilities. And once the plan is in place, we monitor it, we manage it, and we give you a portal where you can come and see how the plan is doing in real time. And that's my contact information. Any questions on any of the slides? We can always go back.
Yes, Sean.
I have a couple. Thank you. I appreciate you coming in and giving the presentations. It's definitely relevant for us. I am curious about the operational adder, like the consultant that some towns opt to, they pay a bit more on the, was it on the electrical bill to pay for like a, is a consultant that actively works the plan or whatnot?
The adder, the adder is one mil per kilowatt hour. Okay, that's, that's our fee. It's paid by the competitive supplier. It's not paid by the town. To put that into perspective, remember the old 100 light watt light bulbs? If you ran 100, one of those light bulbs for 10 hours, that's one kilowatt hour. Okay? Our fee on that is one tenth of a penny, one mil.
So you, so you guys would be the, you would be the adder? The fee that we would collect would go directly to you?
You, you don't collect it, it's paid directly to us by the competitive supplier.
Sure.
Yes.
Can you amend the, say it's an 18-month or 24-month term? Can you amend that during the term for a better cost?
You don't amend it during the term. What you can do at times, you can blend and extend if, if something comes up toward the end of that, of that period.
I guess what I'm curious about is if you lock in at the beginning for 18 or 24 months or whatnot, what's the point of the adder? Like what, what does the consultant do? Like if it's an option to add it or not, is kind of like what I read, then why would we add it? What would the consultant do as far as like helping with costs or whatnot?
Well, essentially, when we launch the program, the town picks out the plan that it feels is most advantageous to the residents. That could be anywhere from 12 months, 18 months, 24 months, 30 months, 36 months. It's a contract, okay? And during that time, it stays in place. It's not changed, okay? There are some options we have to blend and extend if we go further than that contract. But what we have to do, we have to do a competitive bid at the end of all those contracts.
So really would be to prepare for that competitive bid at the end? Like that's what the consultant would be doing primarily or?
We would. For instance, if we had, if we had a two-year contract, we would start looking to extend that contract at least six months before the end of the contract, provided the market is good. And we'd only go out to bid in a good market.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. If we take your plan now, that means the entire town of Whitman has a choice of what plans they want?
This is, this is a, this is an opt-out plan. So essentially, once the plan is launched, there's a 30-day period where the, the residents get a customer information letter. It explains the program. And of course, before that, there's more information that comes out. And during that, that customer notification period, they can, they can do nothing and become part of the plan, or they can opt out of the plan. Okay? Essentially, that affects only those people who are on the basic service of National Grid. Anybody who has already chosen a competitive supplier doesn't affect them. They're not notified at all.
Okay, because I am one of those. Because I go online and I get by the cheapest electrical supply and...
Okay, then, then you wouldn't get a customer notification letter because you're not on the basic service of National Grid?
So basically if, because I usually go online when my, I think it's 18 months, when it's up, when it's getting close, I'll go online and see what I can come up with electricity to get a, a new supplier.
Right.
Like right now, I have Retail Solutions, NIG Retail Solutions. I'm paying 0.169. You have higher and you have lower.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
When my plan ends, I have the choice of re-upping and staying with them. If their rates are basically what I want, if they go up, then I look for cheaper rates.
Right. Or, or at the end of your contract, you could come into the aggregation if you want.
Right. And what I'm wondering is, once we come in, if the town comes into it, how many, do you just look for the cheapest rate and then everybody can get on it?
What we do is we give the town on what's known as bid day, a matrix. Three or four suppliers bid on your load.
Right.
For your residents. We've got, we go 12 months, 18 months, 24 months, 30 months, 36 months. So you have a grid of, of these rates. You pick the one that you think is most advantageous to, to the residents. Those that want to stay in the program don't have to do anything. Those who have already chosen a competitive supplier like yourself are not affected because they don't get a customer notification letter. Normally, there's 10 to 12% of the population of each town who is in that position that you're in, that have picked their own supplier. But most people are still on basic service of the utility.
National Grid is very expensive. The supply, National Grid is very expensive in their supply.
Well, they, right now, they're 18, 2, 1, 3 per kilowatt hour.
Right. So personally, I think it's, I can understand the plan as far as 18 months, 24 months, whatever. But I think what everybody is looking for is lower electric bills. It's that simple.
Yes.
I mean, and if they can come up with a plan that lowers their plan by 20, 30, 40, 50, 60 bucks a month, right, they're going to go with it. And the trouble is, what happens if we go into the plan with yawn, right? And then are we locked in for the 18 months if that's what we choose? And all of a sudden, they go online and they see something that's cheaper than what you're offering?
And anybody who comes into the program, into the aggregation, can get out of it at any time without penalty or termination fee and go to a third-party supplier or go back to the utility.
Yeah, I don't think that, yeah, okay.
Either way, either way. You know, certainly, certainly last year when National Grid was 33 cents.
Yeah.
Most of our aggregations were in the 10 to 11 cent range. So it was a, it was a home run during that period of time.
That's when I went to another, I've never used, I think I've used National Grid very, not that much. I've always gone to a, a different supplier.
Well, you know, initially, when deregulation went into effect in the late 1990s, the Commonwealth was expecting everyone to just pick their own supplier. But it never worked for the residences. It certainly worked for commercial, but it didn't work for residences. That's why aggregation is so popular.
I think a lot of people didn't understand it.
Well, that's true.
And not computer, you know, savvy.
Absolutely.
Then, so whatever, sorry.
And that's exactly what I was going to say, because it seems like your program fills in the gaps for people that are afraid to go out and look, because it's a very scary world and there's a lot of scam artists.
Yes.
And a lot of these people come door to door.
Yes.
And some aren't even legitimate.
That's right.
So I think your service would kind of, almost like put them into a net, a safety net almost.
Yes.
That would allow them to get cheaper rates without the fear. I don't even know if, if they would know how much you were doing for them. But I like the options and I like that you can get out at any time. I don't like things where you're handcuffed for something.
Right.
So it sounds very nice to me anyways.
And, and certainly, we go out to bid at the most advantageous times in the market. For instance, right now, national, natural gas rates are coming down because before this past week.
Gas rates are literally...
We had, we had a pretty warm winter, so they've come down. We've got seven new launches that are going to happen by the end of March, and we're in a very good market right now with, with those plans coming, come to launch.
I did like that you said you would not go out when the market is not good. I like that.
We want to be successful, we want you to be successful. So we're not going to go out in a market and, and get a bid that isn't good for you.
Right.
You know, we're, we sit on the same side of the table as you do.
Well, I'm always filling my gas tank when it's the cheapest, so I enjoyed that part.
Yep.
You just mentioned gas. Are you both electric and gas?
Well, interesting you should ask, because at our year-end meetings, obviously at the end of last year, our managing director said to me, John, why don't we develop natural gas, the natural gas market in Massachusetts? I said, Charles, I'll see what I can do. So in the next couple of months, I'm going to, I'm going to research getting into the natural gas and the things too. But right now, we're just, just doing electric.
Because it's all National Grid, supplier.
Yes. Yep.
Okay, I like that.
Any other suggestions?
He's the expert, right?
Yeah. And so probably should say first, I do have a disclosure on file with the town clerk for a potential conflict of interest, because I do work for the DPU, although I have nothing to do with municipal aggregation. I discussed it with state ethics and that was the, this is the path I can be involved on the municipal side, as long as I don't touch it on the DPU side. So I feel like I can weigh in here. I know Mary Beth and I did a little bit of research. We, we liked Good Energy in part because of the size, you know, the large customer base. If Whitman were going out bidding on our own, is not really a guarantee that we're going to get the competitive rate, but partnering with a, a large group like Good Energy kind of gives us that advantage.
Yeah, certainly, certainly the town can go out by itself, or it doesn't have to. We usually try to group towns. We have a number of aggregations and certainly, you know, you're, you start today, you're about a year away from getting approved. Hopefully, hopefully that comes down because there, there is some pressure on a DPU to get those plans through faster. So, and there is some legislation that whether it goes through or not, they're trying to get a situation where a, a municipal aggregation plan, if not approved within 180 days of submission, will be automatically approved. So that could bring that time period down significantly.
I actually think New Hampshire has similar legislation.
But essentially, you know, we're, we're always, we're always talking to towns, we're always getting new clients, and certainly, we want to group clients as much as we can to, to get a larger load so that we get a lower price.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Is this, if we do this, is plans open to both businesses, businesses also?
Small businesses, G1 accounts.
Okay. What about school systems?
Yes, it is. Yes. We, we have a number of, we have a number of towns, and again, we don't, we don't try to interfere with any, any relationships that are in place with municipal accounts or school accounts. If, if a town comes to us and says, hey, can you, can you put the school accounts or our municipal accounts in the aggregation? We'll certainly, we'll certainly do that. Or we could always go out to bid separately for those, because most of the time, your, your municipal accounts are G2s. And we can sometimes get a better rate on the G2 accounts because of the load profile that's different.
And does it depend on, I do Seltzer-Voetek. The school facility is in Hanover. That's not colored in. But things like Situit, and you know, we have nine, we have nine towns come to Seltzer-Voetek. Some of them, like Situit, is that Cohasset?
Yes, Cohasset's in there. Marshfield.
Rockland, Hanson. All right, so I mean, they're, they're colored in, but as I say, where the school is located in Hanover, it's not. Norwell's not. So I mean, you know, there's, out of nine towns, say there's like six towns that are in, right, on the plan and three towns that are not, that means the school is exempt from going?
Well, essentially, you know, if you put a school district together, those are just the, the aggregations we have in place.
Yeah.
If you have a school system that has nine towns together, okay, we could always go out to bid for those, whether, whether they're in our, our aggregation or not.
I'll tell them we can do it.
I did think, if I can answer that, I do believe Voetek goes out to bid on their own as a competitive supplier, because they also purchase excess wind from either all or Situit.
Yeah. Right, we buy some of their...
Likewise, the town of Whitman, we have our own competitive electric supply. We just negotiated a two-year contract and we are, we participate in a community solar agreement as well for, I think, about 10%. So I don't know that we will, the town, the municipal buildings will participate in municipal aggregation, but...
We don't, we don't, we don't want to interfere with any relationships that are in place with municipal accounts or, or school accounts unless we're approached.
Exactly. But I do think that the, the advantage to going to a municipal aggregation plan is that, you know, the town negotiated, it's about 13 cents a kilowatt hour for the next two years. And National Grid's rate right now is 18 cents. So the town is saving money.
Yeah, and it's 60.
And I think we can, you know, by partnering with someone like this for the residents and small businesses, we can extend the same benefit to them.
Could you speak to the renewable energy a little bit locally and nationally?
Essentially, we deal with a, a company here called Green Energy Consumers Alliance. They're a nonprofit out of Boston. They are the gold standard for sourcing Massachusetts Class 1 renewable energy certificates. Okay? They are, again, the gold standard for those clients that go 100% renewable with their RECs, their renewable energy certificates, they're tax deductible, okay, because they are a nonprofit. So we deal with them because they're the best and because they get, they have projects that they've, that they bought long-term contracts on here in Massachusetts, Rhode Island, and they have a couple in Maine.
Could you give us some perspective as far as like financially, if we chose to go with the more of the renewable energy, knowing that people could opt out if they wanted for a cheaper energy? But if we did that, cost-wise, where would it fall in reference to like National Grid?
Well, essentially, right now, most of our programs that we just renewed last year, the 100% mark is still below the 18% for National Grid. Okay? And essentially, what happens when you go out, you get, in the default product, you can put a little bit of extra green energy. Normally, towns start with 5%, sometimes 10% above what is required by the state. But then you also have a fallback. You have, you have an option with no additional green for those people that just want the very, the very basic, okay? And then you have 100%. So you have something for everybody.
You mean the individual residents can choose, not we collectively go in?
Individual resident, well, you set up which, which you want. Generally, okay, it's, it's a default with a little bit more. It's a second choice.
Sorry, I just got a little bit confused. When you say you set up, do you mean we, like the Board of Selectmen or you as an individual?
The board chooses, or your designee chooses how much more you want of renewable energy over the required amount by the state in that default product. That's the one that everybody's put into. If they don't choose either 100% or they, they go down to no, no more green than is required. So everybody has, has an option.
Kind of lost me again, sorry. I apologize. You mean, so the Board of Selectmen, say we had the goal that we really wanted to shoot for the 100% renewable energy?
Well, you have, that's one of the options. You have three options.
I got you. So if we chose the option for 100% renewable, does that mean everybody in Whitman who's at the basic plan would have the 100% renewable?
You wouldn't want to do that, because you...
Just, just play it out for me. Or does it mean that individual residents in Whitman could choose one of three options?
Okay.
The fully renewable, like the fully renewable, kind of like the in the middle or just the base?
All right, well, normally, what happens is your default or your standard product, which everybody is put into, if they don't opt out, has a little bit more green in it, say 5% more green than is required by the state. But there are two other options. There's the basic with no additional green in, or 100% for those people that, that want more renewable energy. Now, generally, we find in, in our communities, we get between 2% and 3% of the people will go for 100% and 2% or 3% will go for basic. Everybody else is in that middle slice.
I still, I'm a, I just, I don't know if you've quite answered my question. The question I have is, if I'm an individual resident.
Yes.
Will I have the option to go for the fully renewable, the middle, or the base?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That, that's part of what's explained in the letter that goes out during that customer notification period. There's a chart that shows everybody exactly what the options are and what the renewable energy content is in, in each one of those options.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for the patience.
Can I just ask, how, I understood it, so I just, I hope I'm following, is that if you don't pick a plan, then you'll pick for them. And if they pick a plan, they have three choices, every person. And that the buildings themselves or schools or whatever, that's a whole separate thing.
Exactly.
Thank God. I don't follow energy too much, but I'm trying to follow you.
Anyone else have, have a question?
So how do we go about this? Do we make a decision or does it go to town meeting or what?
So I can actually, we did take the vote at town meeting, at the last town meeting, before bringing in a consultant. We did it kind of backwards. Most towns would, would bring in Good Energy, draft that bylaw, we just borrowed Hanson's bylaw that Good Energy wrote, you know, a year or two ago. So we're actually at the point where if we were to vote today to, you know, draft an agreement with, with John and Good Energy, I think we could start drafting a plan, right? Is that the process?
Absolutely. Sure.
Yeah.
And it does take a year for this process?
Well, essentially, we would get a draft plan to you, you would approve the plan. It goes then to the Department of Energy Resources. They look it over, they say, yes, it's compliant with the law. You get what's known as a consultation letter. That letter gives you permission to submit it to the Department of Public Utilities. They're the approval agent, okay? And whatever, however long it takes for them to approve it, okay? We can move as quickly as they will let us move. And again, we can't do anything without the approval of DPU. Okay? When we send out a customer notification letter, it has to go to DPU first for approval. We say boo and has to go to DPU for approval. So it's not like we're doing this on our own or the town's doing it on its own. It's all guided by the Department of Public Utilities.
So it probably up to a year, could be less, but probably no more.
We're hoping that things change at DPU. It appears they've gotten some more staffing recently and some more hearing officers. So we're hoping that, that comes down significantly, because there's been a lot of pressure put on them recently by state reps that say, guys, you got to go a little faster here.
I have one last question. I'm sorry.
Not at all.
Anybody, anybody in town who is like myself, goes online and picks cheaper energy, right, electricity, right? When my, usually when, when mine is up, they, they ask me if I want to renew, right? And before I renew, I usually go online to look at if I get something cheaper.
Yep.
And then I say no, and I go with the cheaper thing. Do I have to wait for that to happen if, if we go with this and your rate is cheaper than I'm paying my 16.9? And your rate is cheaper, do I, can I, who would I call? Would I call National Grid saying I'm going with a different supplier?
We, we provide a website that has all this information on it for the town that, that residents can look at, can contact the supplier, you can talk and contact us, you can fill out an enrollment form on the website, okay, to get into the program. So shortly before the end of a contract that you or anybody else would have, they'd get on the site, they'd make a phone call to get into the, the aggregation.
Is the list, the site's listed here? Is your site listed on the, on this program here?
Well, the, the, the site for Whitman isn't done yet.
Okay.
It would be a, a specific site for the town of Whitman. But again, our, if you want to look at our company site, it's goodenergy.com.
Okay.
Yep.
So Josh, you're saying town meeting already approved to do this?
So yeah, I, I had asked this to be put on last May's town meeting warrant, so we have the approval of town meeting to move forward with this.
Town meeting says we do.
This is Article 21 of the May 2023 Annual Town Meeting.
So we need a motion to go into this, to enter into, how do we do this?
I would like a vote.
What is your, what is your recommendation there, Beth?
Our recommendation, my recommendation would be yes, to engage Good Energy and take a vote to move forward with a contract.
Which basically is following the vote that we took at that time.
Correct.
Town meeting didn't specify Good Energy, but there's effectively three consultants and we think they're the one for Whitman.
I think it's a great opportunity for the residents to, to save on their bills.
Absolutely. It's all that matters. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Could you, could you please describe the motion?
I will make the motion that we enter into, how would I put it, a contract?
An agreement.
An agreement.
With Good Energy.
With Good Energy.
For municipal aggregation.
For what?
Municipal aggregation.
Municipal aggregation.
Then I'll second that. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Great job, John. Thank you very much.
I thank you so very much.
Thank you all for having us tonight.
Why wouldn't we?
I appreciate the savings you're going to bring our residents.
That's our, that's our whole purpose.
That's great.
Thank you much. Have a good night.
You as well. Thank you.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is the chairman's report. We're going to pass over that. New business. Actor on the request of Homestead Harvest, Liz Wilson, for a one-day liquor license on the premises located at 30 Temple Street, Unit C, for the following events, subject to receipt of the license fees owner before February 13th, 2024. February 13th, 2024, four-course dinner, 20-person max, 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. February 24th, 2024, pasta-making class, 16-person max, 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
I mean, you already made your motion?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I should do this last year.
Actor on the request of town clerk Don Volle to appoint election workers for 2024 in accordance with the list provided and to set the annual town election hours from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Some of...
Is there a motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Actor on the recommendation of Chief Handlon to appoint Michael Damiano to the position of auxiliary special police officer through June 30th, 2024. Chief Handlon. Can we, can someone make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Chief.
Yeah, good evening, once again. So Officer Damiano retired from Brockton. Brockton does not carry officers once they retire. He's looking for some additional work. He's been a career police officer over there and he is post-certified and has all the other certifications to go along with it. And a part of the process is to go through in-service annually and he plans on doing that as well, so we could use the help.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Actor on the request for toll booth fundraisers submitted by the following. Whitman Area Toy Drive, September 7th, 2024, 9 to 1. Nights at Columbus, October 12th, 2024, 9 to 4. American Legion, May 4th, 2024, 9 to 1. Rain Day, 52524. Clear a motion?
Some of...
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Vote to open and close the annual town meeting warrant. You have a recommendation on that, Mary Beth?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to request that the board set the February meeting schedule before we vote to open and close the annual town meeting warrant. And two weeks from now, if we stay with that schedule, the next meeting would fall on February 6.
Right.
I don't know if you want to set the one after that for the 20th? I don't know how people's schedules look.
That is well, how does, how does that look to people?
I think that's okay. The 20th is the, is school vacation week, it's day after President's Day. That's not a problem to me.
So what do you say is?
Not for me. Anyone? Okay, so our meeting will be the 6th and the 20th?
Yep.
Okay, is there a motion for that?
Some moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Okay, go, go.
Okay, great. Then I would like to request that we open the annual town meeting warrant this evening and that we close the annual town meeting warrant for May of 2024 on February 6.
At our meeting?
At our meeting.
Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
How many weeks, how many weeks do we have for them to?
It would be two weeks. And I checked last year and it was opened on the 26th and closed on the 9th. It was the same timeframe, so I followed that.
Okay, because I'm just looking at, you know, school budgets, will they have it, you know, presented to you by then?
Or will those articles usually come in through capital?
No, I'm talking about school budgets as far as the operating budget.
This is mainly, yes, I mean, we'll still, that's ongoing.
Okay, Article 2, right, okay.
Article 2 is ongoing right up to the town meeting. So this is mainly for articles.
So open it tonight and close it on the 6th, okay?
Okay, then motion's been made, I think, and seconded. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
All right.
Okay, we're done with our business. Town administrators' report.
Yes, so the superintendent of South Shore VOTEC, Tom Hickey, has asked if we have a member of the Board of Selectmen who would be interested in serving as an informal liaison on the South Shore VOTEC MSBA school building project. And this would not replace any direct communications he has with me on the project. However, if another town representative were in the mix over the next year, it might be very helpful with information sharing. Is there anybody that?
Is there anyone that would like to volunteer?
I think it would be a conflict of interest because my daughter applied.
Okay.
Right.
Anyone?
I was going to say, is Dan interested? He serves on the school committee over there.
I can't do both.
All right, fair enough.
I'm looking to, I'm looking to my left.
Don't you think that's proper?
I mean, other towns, I mean, we get nine towns that can, you know, make one sign. You only need one person. The whole thing is to listen to it so that we have basically eight members.
He doesn't need a person from each town. He doesn't need a person from each town.
No, no.
He just needs a person.
A person.
So one of those other towns can send somebody.
Right. Because the whole idea is that if it's a four-four vote on the budget, we need one person to make it the, you know, yes, I know.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
That's fine.
That's how, I mean, the last time somebody from Whitman did it was, well, Frank Lytton did it once and then Brian Bazanzin did it.
Have one of the item, if I may?
Yes.
Okay. So today I did receive a letter from the Board of Health. And they wanted to let the Board of Selectmen know that the flu and COVID numbers have recently increased. And due to the recent increase, the Board of Health would like the Board of Selectmen to urge residents to do the following. Get vaccinated against COVID and flu this season. Wear a mask to decrease the spread of disease and stay home when sick to avoid spreading disease. The Board of Health informed our office through this letter that the free COVID test kit supply given to the Board of Health by the state has been distributed and exhausted. If the state offers test kits in the future, the Board of Health will endeavor to obtain free kits again. In the interim, if any residents would like a free COVID test, they can contact Walgreens in Whitman. And CBS and Walgreens in Rockland are also conducting free COVID testing. Residents are also eligible for eight free tests from the U.S. government by going to covid.gov